It's our annual budget workshop tonight. And I believe we have all commissioners, and we have two missing.
Yes.
So will you note the recall? Thank you.
On his way.
Ted, I'm going to turn it over to you for welcomes and introductions. Is that okay?
Yeah. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure, did you want to go through invocation, pledge of allegiance?
We can do that, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm not used to doing that at workshops, so. But why don't we stand and have a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell to lead us in the pledge, so.
Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have public comment then in the meeting. I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Ted Dearing, for welcomes and introductions and then the presentation.
Mayor Baiki, can I have everybody sign into their computer and log that they're here? Or do you just want me to log everybody who's here?
Well, yeah, because I never have been set up on this yet.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Just before we get into the presentation this evening, I probably should acknowledge that we are using our new Civic Plus Agenda software this evening. I know this is something that this commission's going to have to get used to. We do plan to go live with this software for next Tuesday's meeting, and we'll have plenty of technical support and whatever else you might need, hopefully, to get logged in and be able to use the system. And I might even suggest, if commissioners are able, to come a little bit early next Tuesday, just in case we've got any technical issues to work our way through. Hopefully, you'll indulge us while we make this transition. We appreciate it. That being said, I'll move right into the presentation, Mayor, if that's okay with you. We welcome the opportunity this evening to share the draft fiscal year 2026 budget and answer any questions that you may have. We have several members of senior staff here who can help with questions as needed. Aaron and I are going to tag-team this a little bit. We'll get into the specifics of the budget in just a minute here. First, I'd just like to acknowledge that, you know, as we are legally required to do, we're presenting you with a balanced budget this evening that proposes a small use of fund balance, roughly $250,000, to offset potential shortage that we may have in the downtown parking fund. It's been a little bit of a slow recovery for the parking fund from the pandemic. It's ticking up, for sure, and we're hopeful that it may outperform our expectations, and we won't need to use any fund balance, but we do have a little bit budgeted in this year's request.
Excuse me, Ted. Real quick, like, if you do have a question of Ted or Aaron, just feel free to interrupt. And if it's a hard question, do it right away. If it's an easy softball question, let's do it at the end of the presentation so that we'll get better benefit for it. Thank you, Ted.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Vicki, if you go to the next slide. I just want to briefly touch on the agenda real quick that we'll have this evening. Aaron's going to provide some detail on our fiscal year '25 estimates and estimated use of fund balance. That's the current fiscal year, of course. Then we'll get into some discussion about our proposed fiscal year '26 budget and some of the assumptions we used to create the framework for that budget. I'll turn it over to Aaron to get into more details in the general fund and some of our other funds relative to the fiscal year '26 budget. We'll talk just briefly about ARPA and where we are with those funds, touch on our priority-based budgeting approach, and then share a few future thoughts that we have about both challenges and opportunities for upcoming budgets. And then discussion and next steps. So I'll first turn this over to Aaron, so he can dive in a little bit deeper on the fiscal year '25 estimates.
Thank you, Ted. So estimates are the best guess of finance and departments about what is going to happen, when in reality, anything could happen. Next slide, please. So estimates show, in addition to fund balance of $1,044,041, this is compared to a use of fund balance in the adopted budget. The positive swing in revenue estimates is due primarily to income tax revenues continuing to defy expectations by projecting to be $567,000 in excess of budget and a little over $1 million over the fiscal year '24 actual. Interest income continues to be a bright spot and on an upward trajectory, given the current interest rate environment, as well as the city's more proactive approach to investing. Interest income is projected to be about $722,000 over budget. Over the past several years, city staff has taken a conservative approach to budgeting interest income and investment appreciation, and we've continued that into fiscal year '26, just given the sort of roller coaster ride that the markets have been on recently. The city begun receiving opioid settlement revenue due to its participation in the opioid class action settlements. These funds have to be spent on opioid remediation purposes. On the expenditure side, the city took a very conservative approach to budgeting for elections, given the voter-led initiatives that expanded early voting access. The worst-case budget that we plugged in for fiscal year '25 never materialized, so we, the city realized the savings of roughly $800,000. So staff has heard from commission in recent conversations about a desire to set money aside for capital improvements. The fiscal year '25 estimates include a $2 million transfer to our capital improvement fund to be used for capital project needs. A year-end budget adjustment will come before the commission at the second meeting in June, because we, as staff, like to get as close to the end of the fiscal year as possible before requesting any amendments to the budget. Next slide, please. Page three is a synopsis of revenues, and page 15 is a synopsis of expenses. Greater details expounded upon in the budget books, pages five through 14 and 17 through 21. These are tabs two and tab three in your budget book. Department 00 on page three represents all of the general revenue, our major revenue sources. The remaining departments represent program-specific income at a department level. Tab four of your budget book, which is page 23, shows a projected unassigned fund balance for the general fund of approximately $13.1 million at 63025, which is 20.9% of estimated The city amended the fund balance policy in the summer of 2022 that raised the fund balance reserve threshold from 217% from 8%. This means that our fiscal year '25 projected ending fund balance exceeds that target amount. And I'll turn it back over to Ted for proposed budget discussion assumptions for all funds.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. So again, we'd like to just talk about some of the assumptions that are creating the framework for this fiscal year '26 budgets here. You know, before we do that, we do want to recognize that everyone, really, including the city, is feeling some financial stress. We acknowledge that. We want to note that, as we work through this presentation, that while we're projecting a balanced budget, there are some one-time revenues and one-time savings presented in this budget that, depending on decisions made by future administrations, may not be there in future years. So we want to acknowledge that. You know, any savings that we have achieved tend to get prioritized to other budget areas and consumed by other budget areas. A good example of that would be the fact that we are not anticipating going forward having any type of subsidy for transit operations, but we are adding roughly $1.7 million in debt for our fire facilities, and that currently doesn't exist in the general fund. And so will have to be absorbed in the general fund in the next fiscal year partially and then in years going forward. So we do expect finances to be a little tight for the next few years, but we're hoping to be able to manage our way through that. Next slide, if you would. Vicki? Just some quick notes. We're projecting a slightly more modest 5.1% growth in taxable value compared to the couple of years you might recall. For example, in fiscal year '25, we had a 7.8% production or a projection. The DDA continues to provide support to the city's general fund. The DDA provides funding for debt service related to the quiet zone. That is ongoing. They do provide funding for Central Business District general maintenance to the city. They pay for one and a half full-time police officers who provide patrol in the downtown area. They support the city's ITC and provide funding for both Kellogg Arena and the city's small business development team. And then we do have a number of internal service funds that provide support to various city departments, and that would be, you know, most of the finance department, utility billing, income tax, city manager's office, internal funds that then are allocated to departments as part of an administrative allocation on a regular basis. These internal service funds are, you know, they're, and the corresponding costs of those funds are a constant conversation among administrative staff, and I do think it's an area that we need to challenge ourselves and continue to challenge ourselves going forward to find efficiencies and savings. Next slide, Vicki, if you would. There is a cost of living increase, and COLAs, a cost of living increase, 3% COLA, and steps for non-reps included in this budget. Then, of course, we also have included the appropriate negotiated wages increases for all of our various bargaining agreements, which have, we've settled many of those over the last couple of years, and then have a couple more that we're engaged in currently. And we do also anticipate that there will be some changes this year to the fee bond and insurance schedule, particularly in recreation, where there haven't been any price increases in quite a while. And along with those changes in the fee bond and insurance schedule, we incorporate those into the fiscal year '26 budget. And as the commission is aware, we bring the fee bond and insurance schedule forward for year approval at the same time as the budget in early June. You can go to the next slide, if you would. So I did mention there are some one-time revenue savings and expense, revenue additions and expense savings in this budget. We detailed just a few of those there. Again, depending on decisions made by future administrations, you know, those are costs that will probably have to be absorbed by the general fund going forward. We didn't think it made any sense to budget for expenses that we just simply weren't going to have in this fiscal year, but we recognize they certainly could be part of future fiscal years. And then typically, we do get special requests for every budget cycle. Generally, those are requests for new positions. We did have a handful of special requests for this year. Unfortunately, we were not able to accommodate any of those, so this particular budget does not include any additional special requests. And I did, Vicki, you can go to the next slide. I did want to take just a couple of minutes to talk about our DEI officer and that work in the city manager's office. So the commission is aware, you know, back in 2023, we added a DEI officer to the city manager's office. That position had some very specific responsibilities that were tied to recommendations that were in the city's equity audit. Kim was also charged, Kim, who's been doing a great job for us, was also charged with developing an action plan to guide our activities going forward. As that action plan has developed, and I worked with Kim closely on that, you know, we've noticed that what we really need is an organization, and thus, we've shifted our thinking somewhat about how we're approaching this work, is more of an organizational development initiative that really relies on best practices in the industry to ensure that we treat all employees with fairness and that we are inclusive of all employees. And as we have, again, continued to develop that work, our emphasis really now is more on implementing, you know, for example, consistent policies that treat everyone the same, that we can acknowledge treat everyone the same within the organization. We're lifting up data-driven decision-making. We have a lot of data sources. We don't always do a great job of both analyzing and incorporating those data sources into our decision-making. We want to focus more there. Maximizing responsibility and accountability among employees, effective communication organizational-wide. When we survey employees, we often hear about their desire to simply have more communication about what the organization is doing at any given time. And there's a lot of desire to be, to have kind of cross-departmental knowledge about how the city works, and so there are opportunities there as well. Skill development, we hear a lot about skill development, professional development, you know, do our team members have the skills and the tools that they need to do the best possible work is a potential area of focus. We've certainly heard from our mid-level managers that managing and motivating a new and younger generation of employees is an area where they would like additional training, and then certainly recognizing the good work of employees through employee recognition. So these are the kinds of activities that I think we've identified, reflects probably more of a merit-driven approach to the best, you know, as the best way for us to achieve our objectives of fairness and inclusion for all of our employees. So, you know, in doing so, we also, gives us an opportunity to make sure, you know, that we're following the law and that, you know, we are eliminating any activities or approaches that would, approaches that would give potentially a preference to a protected class. And you're seeing a lot of focus on that at every level of government and in every organization, and we want to make sure that we're complying. So we've continued to fund this work in the manager's office for the next fiscal year, but we have shifted away, I think, from the notion of a DEI office to more of an organizational development initiative. We will likely change, and Kim and I have had these conversations, likely change the position's name, not because we're not committed to being inclusive of all of the residents in our community, but we think this is what's best in terms of development for the organization.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I guess I'm not quite sure why we're keeping this in the city manager's office and not, seems like more of an HR function and kind of an EEO thing, which should fall under HR. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, and that's a good point, Commissioner. We've had those conversations as well, is, you know, is HR a better fit for this initiative going forward? And I think probably future administrations will give that some consideration. We want to make sure we get off on the right foot and that the organizational development manager is empowered to work with staff on the department level to implement some of the training and initiatives that we want to. And having that authority come from the city manager's office is very helpful as we launch this initiative. But I think your question is a legitimate one, is, you know, what's going to be the best fit for this going forward, once it's a little bit more established as part of our institution?
I have a question. So you're saying you're changing the name of that position?
Yeah, we will likely change the name from DEI officer to more something along the lines of organizational development manager.
Okay. And that's not taking anything away from the employee?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are any other questions, then we'll move on to our fiscal year '26 general fund budget recommendation. I'm going to turn it back over to Aaron to get into the details.
Thanks, Ted. Next slide. Thank you, Vicki. So tab one of your binder shows the millage comparison. Staff is recommending an overall millage rate of 15.570 mills, a decrease of .095 mills from the prior year rate of 15.665. Since a high of 15.934 mills in fiscal years '20 and '21, the city's overall millage rate has decreased by .364 mills to the 15.570 mills being proposed for fiscal year '26. The decrease is due in large part to changes to the city contribution rate to the police and fire pension as a result of good investment earnings, as well as higher covered payroll from police and fire participants. Next slide, please. So per the city charter, the city has authorized a levy 11.6 mills. With headly rollbacks that have taken place over the past 30 years, that cap is now at 11.3622 mills. Based on the proposed levy for fiscal year '26, that gives the city 1.375 mills of space or wiggle room, or about $2.2 million. The proposed decrease in the millage would result in approximately a $10 decrease to a home with a $100,000 taxable value. Next slide, please. Since fiscal year 2007, the general fund operating millage has decreased by 1.743 mills from 9.73 to 7.987. That amounts to $2.85 million in today's dollars. Historically, anytime the police and fire pension millage has increased, the commission has chosen to offset it with a decrease to the operating millage. The half-mill for capital projects was added in fiscal year 2017 to help with the debt service on the new police station next door. And as we mentioned previously, since the high in fiscal year '21, the city's overall millage rate has declined by the .364 mills. Next slide, please. This is a graphical representation of the previous slide. As you can see, the police and fire pension millage, represented in orange, has increased its proportionate share of the overall millage, while the proportionate share of the operating millage indicated in green has declined. Next slide, please. So our general fund is funded by a three-legged stool of income sources, property tax, income tax, state revenue sharing. Collectively, these make up 78% of our general fund revenue. The proposed income tax revenue is slightly less conservative than it has been in previous years. This is partly due to an upward trend that we've seen beginning in FY '22. With the return to work of, you know, some major employers locally over the past couple of years, we expect that trend to continue on an upward trajectory. For property tax, the increase in taxable value translates to approximately a $911,000 increase in revenue. State revenue sharing has a projected 2.6% increase from the FY '25 estimate to total proposed revenue of 7.7 million. This is the time of year when the state has another revenue estimating conference. Staff watches this closely on an annual basis to determine if an adjustment is warranted in the proposed budget prior to its adoption. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, the proposed income tax revenue budget is less conservative than previous years, with a 5.3% increase for the '25 estimated over the '24 actual, and a 2.5% increase for the '26 budget over the '25 estimated. Besides the dip in fiscal year '21, income tax has been on an upward trajectory as a whole. And I know we say it every year, but income tax estimates are something that our internal budget team takes very seriously, and we discuss it at nearly every meeting around budget time. So, you know, we're constantly monitoring it and talking about it. Next slide, please. Proposed fund balance is at 21.1% of estimated revenue at 63026, in excess of that 17% fund balance policy we talked about earlier. The FY '26 budget is the first year in the last five that does not incorporate the use of ARPA. The general fund budget includes 1.74 million in debt service, as well as a $1 million partial year debt service payment for a proposed capital improvement bond for fire facilities. The transfer to the airport is $950,000, with a proposed $500,000 in capital support additionally coming from the B.C. Tifa. Next slide. So on this slide, we're looking at two years' worth of information. The first grouping of numbers up there at the very top is where we started the current year in reserves at about 15.45 million. The second grouping is where we expect both revenues and expenses to land in the current year. Those are our estimates. The third grouping is where we expect to end the current year at approximately 16.5 million in fund balance. The fourth grouping of numbers represent the fiscal year '26 budget proposal, showing a use of fund balance of about $248,000. We're comfortable with this use of fund balance, given that we have added to it in four of the last five years. And the last grouping is where we expect to end FY '26, should all revenue and expense be recognized at 100%, with a fund balance of 16.25 million. Next slide, please. So just a couple of things to touch on here. Department 00, as you can see, that declined a little bit from fiscal year '25 to '26, and that's due in large part to no ARPA revenue recognition. That was a decrease of $2.1 million year over year. That's been offset by increases for income tax and interest income, amongst other things. Recreation took a little bit more conservative approach to budgeting revenue for fiscal year '26 as it relates to the binder park golf course, with the retirement of our longtime golf course manager, Ron Osborne, earlier this year. The change to the police department revenue is due to some one-time revenues that were received to assist with the police academy and some M. Cole CPE training. Next slide, please. As you can see, overall budgeting- slide, please. As you can see, overall budget expenditures have decreased from FY '25 to FY '26. A large part of that is due to no ARPA. The cost for labor relations has decreased for FY '26 due to eight of nine collective bargaining agreements being negotiated in fiscal year '24 and '25. The, as we talked about earlier, the fire department has a $1 million placeholder for a proposed capital improvement bond. The change, significant change year-over-year in the clerk's office was due to no elections being budgeted in FY '26. And then down at the bottom in department 50, the fiscal year '25 estimated number represents that $2 million transfer to the capital improvement fund that we talked about earlier, to help fund future capital project needs. Next slide, please. So, now we're going to talk about some other funds. You know, general fund is, we talk a lot about the general fund, but there are lots of other things happening in these funds. Major and local streets up there at the top, they receive money through Act 51, which is the gas tax that's collected at the pump. The city is responsible for maintaining nearly 300 miles of major and local streets. There's the Michigan Justice Training Fund. This is for police department training and ammunition and is funded by a state appropriation on an annual basis. We have the inspections Fund. This is, just like it sounds, these are largely building, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical permits. Looking down to enterprise funds, from an accounting perspective, these function more like a business than, than our other types of funds. As Ted mentioned earlier, the parking fund is receiving a general fund subsidy of $250,000 this year due to increased costs from our, from our operator and to not quite having recovered from, from COVID. Projects in the water and sewer funds include main replacements, lead service line replacements, repairs at the well field, our DWS, the DWSRF project that the commission recently approved is also a part of that. Looking down to the internal service funds, these are funds that provide services internally to, to our other city departments. The equipment center or fleet fund, they maintain a combination of 609 pieces of equipment and vehicles. The self-insurance fund charges all city departments for all things insurance, property, liability, medical, dental, vision, workers' comp, life insurance, et cetera. IT is not just IT, but also encompasses GIS and the 311 Information Center. And then the reproduction fund is our, our mailroom and print shop. And I'll turn it back over to Ted for an ARPA update.
Yeah, just a quick update on ARPA. I think commissioners are fairly up to date on where we are in terms of our funds. We obligated everything that we had received in terms of SLR dollars by the end of December 31st, 2024, which was our obligation. We met the deadline for our first quarter report for 2025. That has been submitted. We do still have three larger city projects that are in the works. Those dollars will be spent likely by the end of this construction season. And then we've got four community projects that we're still monitoring as well. Those projects also will likely, at least a couple of them will probably be done before the end of this construction season, and it's possible that a couple of them may carry into '26. We do need to simply, at this point, monitor our expenditures and make sure that everything is expended by the deadline, which is December 31st of 2026. So, we should be in good shape in closing out ARPA. Next slide, please, if you would. And I don't think there's anything additional I need to add here relative to ARPA, so we'll just jump on to priority-based budgeting. The commission, again, I know is very familiar with our priority-based budgeting process. We don't need to spend a lot of time on this. But I do want to recognize that priority-based budgeting, it does, it does give us a methodology to ensure that the dollars that we're spending align well with the commission and the community established results in our community. And, you know, with that, our goal is typically to try to ensure that at least a majority of our expenditures are tied to those quartile programs which best represent community results. If you go to the next slide, Vicky, if you would, you can see here that roughly about 60% of our programming is committed to quartile one and quartile two programs. And so, that's, that's a pretty good number, relatively speaking overall for this type of a budgeting system. It's impossible for us to, for example, completely eliminate quartile three and quartile four programs. As the commission knows, you know, there are some things that were mandated to provide, for example, and we always use the example of elections without picking on Vicky. Don't necessarily align with community results, but it's a service that we're mandated to provide. So, again, we try to get at least a majority of our dollars in quartile one and quartile two.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Regarding priority-based budgeting. I've been back on the commission. I was on from 2017 to 2020. Took a little break from 2020 to 2022. Since I have returned, we've not had a commission workshop to set our priorities. We have two new commissioners with us, and me having been on previous two years, I think you were on, you came on at the same time. When are we going to have another commission workshop on setting those priorities? Because it has been a while, and maybe our priorities have shifted.
Yeah. And you're right, Commissioner. I think it has been almost a full five years since the last time results were established. So, the cycle really is a five-year cycle in '26. I mean, assuming again, that when a new administration gets here, they want to stick with this budgeting process, the cycle, it would be time for an update on both community results and then obviously themes, concepts, definitions, et cetera.
I would, I would say that that has less to do with the new administration, more with our commission priorities.
Yeah. So, yes, you're definitely, that's definitely on tap. And I think that we did, then, next slide is good, Vicky, if you would. If we're there, great. Just a couple of comments about some future budget thoughts, things that are on our radar. Some of these we've covered throughout the narrative here today, but I think they're worth revisiting. Property taxes, for example. We have seen growth in property taxes in recent years. They've been very beneficial to the city's overall budget. I think when we were holding this budget workshop last year, we talked a little bit about our uncertainty about what property tax income might look like going forward for a couple of reasons. Inflation is certainly slowing down a little bit, and we're not seeing quite the same level of growth, and we expect that that will probably shrink a little bit more going forward. And I think, you know, commissioners are aware that property taxes are often a lagging indicator of what's going on economically in the environment. We've had some concerns that post-pandemic there would be a decline in values. Now, we're hearing some conversations about recession and that kind of thing that could certainly have an impact on property taxes going forward. So, we'll be watching that closely for the upcoming fiscal years. I'll let Aaron talk about a couple of these in just a second. Let me just touch on a few others before I turn it over to him. We've already talked a little bit about the one-time revenues and expenses that we have included in this budget, roughly about somewhere between 1.5 and 2 million that could need, or may need to be accommodated in future budgets. So, we want to be aware of that. Parking and solid waste funds, we talked a little bit about the parking fund and some of the challenges we're having there. This commission may also recall that we've had some challenges in the solid waste fund as well, primarily due to fuel surcharges that we have been paying. And the commission actually allocated almost three years' worth of ARPA funding to help offset those shortages, just so our ratepayers would not have to experience an increase. That will expire in 2026, as well as the contract. And so, that will be, certainly be a topic of discussion near the end of this fiscal year. Wanted to touch on the LDDA capture real quick as well. I know the commission's aware that the LDDA is functional and captures on an annual basis, but passes all that capture back to, through to the various taxing jurisdictions. We obviously worked on a Beckley Road study plan this past year and a half, and now we're updating the development plan and the TIF plan for the LDDA. And for the upcoming fiscal year, they would like to retain roughly $500,000 of their capture, and then they would like to ramp up over the next few years. For the upcoming fiscal year, there's no immediate impact on the city's budget, as there were some pass-through dollars there that belonged to the city from a billboard lease out on Beckley Road. But for subsequent budgets going forward, particularly as the LDDA ramps up, there'll be a more dramatic impact on the city's, on the city's general fund. And again, the LDDA would like to get to roughly around 1.1 million to maybe 1.25 million, depending on how it all works out in terms of available capture to implement projects. So, that certainly would have an impact on the city's general fund. We do have a boiler at City Hall that needs to be replaced. We were originally a little concerned because we were looking at roughly $2.5 million, but some additional analysis there has lowered that number considerably, roughly more like around 1 or 1.1 million. But we also have a couple of boilers over at Full Blast that are aging out and need to be replaced as well. And we haven't had too many consequences yet around federal funding, but there is some uncertainty, obviously, around what that looks like going forward. The Hollander project on the Kmart site has been impacted by this recently with the freezing of some funds that are now tied up in court. Hasn't impacted us too much yet, but we're already hearing some conversations around a few grants that we rely on, on an annual basis. One of them, for example, provides some funding for boltproof vests in the police department. It's a 50-50 match, and we're hearing some rumblings that may not be available to us. And then, of course, obviously, we're concerned about our community development block grant dollars and our homes dollars and what that allocation might look like going forward, too. So, a bit of an unknown there, but we'll be watching that very closely. Aaron, there are a couple there you'd like to touch on as well?
Sure. We talked a little bit earlier, earlier about the, the impact of the police and fire millage on the city operating millage, and, you know, how in the past, the commission has elected to roll back the operating millage in years where the police and fire millage rate has increased. So, any changes to economic assumptions or demographic assumptions by our actuaries would likely have a trickle-down effect on the city's operating millage. Actuaries are becoming increasingly more conservative than they were 10 or 15 years ago. So, so a lot of those economic assumptions and demographic assumptions have changed as a result of experience studies done by them and others. Income tax continues to be difficult to peg. As we've talked about, city staff monitors this closely every year to watch for trends, and in the last several years, that trend has been upward. The revenue estimating conference, the city staff tune into that on an annual basis to look for any last-minute changes to state revenue sharing numbers. That's scheduled for Friday, May 16. And then, down at the bottom, the debt service on the capital improvement bond, as we talked about a little bit earlier, the fiscal year 26 budget only includes $1 million of that projected average annual debt service of about 1.7 million, just due to the timing of when we plan to do the, to do the issue. And then the full amount of that 1.7 million would be, need to be included in the fiscal year 27 budget. I think that's all I have to add, Ted.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, if you would, Vicky, real quick. So, we're really near the end of our presentation. We're certainly welcome any questions that you might have, just next steps in the process. The public hearing will be set for May 20th, City Commission meeting here in the commission chambers. And then, as typically we do, we bring the budget for your consideration at the first meeting in June, which would be June 3. And again, we'd bring the fee bond and insurance schedule at that same time. And again, that is all that we have presentation-wise. We're certainly welcome to field your comments and your questions.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Aaron. At this time, I'd like to move down each commissioner, taking some time to reflect on what has just been presented. Give some direction, if that all possible, to the city administration so that they can deliberate amongst the staff to see if they are making the right presentation. Please don't be afraid to support if what you see presented is something that you can support. We really want to look at opportunities to be more reflective of what we are going to move ahead on the budget. So, I'm going to start with the vice mayor. We'll go right down them, and then we'll come back if there are further questions. So, if you have a lot to say.
I don't have any questions right now. I think that I've just been given a lot to digest. And I think that I need to think a little bit more before I...
Well, if you come up with something before the end, just feel free to
Thank you.
wink at me, and I'll follow by you. Chris?
So, I might have a couple of questions
This is your time to say anything.
On round one, and then if we do a round two, I might, I might
I'll come back to you.
Process, like the vice mayor process a little bit more, and then, and then ask. Okay, so, on the fund balance, our goal, our projected goal is 17%, and we are looking at 21.1%, which is over 4% above, which is, we all need to save more. I, I understand. But when is it too much? I, I guess that's kind of my question. And when, we used to call, remember, Mayor, when we used to call this the rainy day fund? We don't call it anymore, that anymore, but we call it the, the fund balance. You know, I'm thinking during COVID, it was probably the most taxing time on our, our city operations, our city budget, revenue. ARPA filled in a lot of those gaps, but as far as, somewhere, I can put my finger on, as far as a rainy day, that would have been it. I'm also thinking of when things come up that we are, we're talking quite a bit about the fire department and, and, and having to take out, having to bond $25 million, or upwards of $25 million from that, because we didn't, hadn't, hadn't really planned for that expenditure in the past. At what point do we say, okay, let's use a portion of our fund balance for, to maybe offset, so we don't have to borrow $25 million? Maybe we use, we do bring this out down to 17%, and we're able to use several million dollars towards that and reduce the amount of bond we have to take out and reduce the amount of payment that we have to make toward that bond over the next, over the next however many years that that bond length is. So, so can you, and I don't know if that's, Ted, I'll let you defer to Aaron if you, you want to, as far as that description of the, the fund balance, why we've chose that amount, why we wouldn't use something like that to help maybe lower our, our bond amount, or, or other priorities that we might have?
Yeah. And I think I can tag-team that a little bit with Aaron, Commissioner. And I think we recognize what you're pointing out, right? We established a policy at 17%. And, you know, fortunately, we've been growing above that percentage. And there certainly is a line in there somewhere, I'm not exactly sure where it's drawn in the sand, that would suggest, okay, if you start to approach, say, 25%, you know, you know, do you need to think about how you're going to put that money into productive use for the priorities of the city?
Isn't that line 17?
Isn't that the line? And it could be. Obviously, from a staff perspective, we're always going to take a very conservative approach
Sure.
to that, which we're doing here. And, you know, and Aaron mentioned earlier, too, that, you know, for, for fiscal year '25, we actually moved $2 million to the 401 fund, which is our capital improvement fund, because we certainly have heard what the commission has been saying in recent months, which is, you know, we need to have dollars set aside to address our capital needs as they come up, particularly those that are unanticipated. And so, yeah, yeah, I think the question, Commissioner, is like, you know, is if, if the commission is comfortable at that level, then staff knows that and can consider what to do once we get above that level. Do we put more of that money into the 401 fund and simply have it available for capital needs going forward? Do you draw money out of the 401 fund, for example, if you wanted to offset some of the debt that was going to be issued for the facility? So, I think all, all good questions, all questions that we're thinking about. But we do recognize, right, you don't just grow the fund balance forever.
No. And I guess if you're looking for direction, that would be my direction. I'd like to see us, I would prefer to see us use some of that additional fund balance, again, not dipping below our 17% line that, that we have in policy to, to offset, rather than, the way I'm thinking about it, we're taking a bond out, and we have to pay interest income. If we pay some principal down on that initially, we don't have to pay that interest income. If we pay some principal down on that initially, we don't have to pay that interest income. That's, that's savings for our, our taxpayers. So that, that would be my, my personal direction. As far as income tax, I know Aaron had talked about how difficult that is to nail down. I know coming out of COVID, a lot of folks were, I mean, I work at the DLA, at the Federal Center, and a lot of, a lot of folks during COVID had been working remotely and not having to pay income tax if they don't live in the city of Battle Creek. I mean, zero. Now, we're all back. You have 15, 1600 people working out of that building. I know Kellogg has brought people back, and that is, has drastically increased our income tax revenue, and I'm sure we're, I'm not sure how we quantify that, how we can actually put a number on that. As well as on property tax, we know that the state has its inflationary multiplier that it gives us each year, and it's somewhere over 3% this year, which in the last two years, it's been 5%. So the city has had a considerable influx of income. Now, I, I really do appreciate staff's position on this. We have a lot of priorities we have to, we as commissioners, we certainly look out for the best interest of the city. We also look out for the best interest of our, of our residents, too. We were directly accountable to them in a lone election. And so, and I know Commissioner Kotarski-Smith and I were at MPC 11 last night, and we heard quite a bit about increased property tax, not only of inflation, but the increased TAC and the pressure that that provides them, as far as many, many of our citizens are on fixed incomes and have to account for that. So it's a delicate balance that we have to, we have to make. We've talked a lot about recently, the increase in income or the property tax for, for TAC, 2.6 whatever mils that, that was. What I'm trying to get my head around is the city stands to save some expenditures in handing that transportation off to the TAC. And I still don't have a clear amount, how much we're saving. And then it's quite a bit lower than what I'm understanding as TAC is taking in with his new, the, the new millage. And unfortunately, Commissioner Morris is not here tonight to, to speak to the TAC. She's our, one of our representatives on the TAC. Where the, where the disconnect is, is the amount that we subsidize with our general fund and what they're taking in seems like considerable, I mean, like a tremendous amount. And I do understand that they are planning on buying additional vehicles to expand that, you know, BCO type operation. I understand that. But the disconnect where, what I'm seeing is what we're saving to what they're collecting and the burden that's on our tax-paying residents and what they're seeing on their tax bill, I'm, I'm not, can you speak to that, please?
Aaron's got a little bit more detail. We talked about this a little bit today in terms of what, what we have provided in terms of subsidy for transit over, say, the last five or six years, particularly the last couple of years, because I think that's a little bit more reflective of, of normal operating procedures, given the pandemic created some anomalies that impacted that number. And I, you know, I think that the tax mill, the tax millage request is, is certainly tied to the proposed service level there. And so, you know, they, they obviously have a very robust vision of how much transportation will be provided beyond what we currently provide here at the city of Battle Creek, much more on-demand service, evening hours that we don't provide, weekend hours, Saturday and Sunday hours, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I think obviously their service scenario is what is driving their request or their millage amount that they're allocating and collecting, or at least have for this, this, this last round of winter taxes, which is, you're right, very much different than what we have been providing in terms of a subsidy for transportation. And Aaron, if you wanted to provide a little more detail on that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I can, Ted. In the last couple of years, the, the general fund subsidy to transit has been hovering right, hovering right around $600,000. But in the four years prior to that, it never really got much above 300,000. You know, when we think about the, the subsidy expressed as a, as a millage rate, you know, so over the last six fiscal years, the transit subsidy, the transit, the general fund subsidy, subsidy of transit has averaged about 2.2707 mils, so a little less than 3/10 of a mil. So, you know, that equates to about $27 on a home with a $100,000 taxable value. Let's see, what else do I have here?
So may I, while he's looking?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
We're talking about our taxpaying citizens based on the number that he just gave, and I understand our subsidy this year was going to be considerably more, like a 10x more than our subsidy, what they're asking for. I don't think we're providing, the TAC is, is, is planning on a 10x more level of service. That's what, when I say a disconnect, that's what I'm trying...
I'm understanding what you're asking.
I'm sorry, are we questioning one another tonight?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm trying to understand, too.
Okay.
I'm not, don't, yeah, don't be defensive. I just, I'm trying to understand what you were asking.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking is our subsidy versus what our taxpayers are now, are now being levied as far as the millage, 2.6 mils. And he said our subsidy was equivalent of about less than 2.3 mils. It's like a 10x difference. That's what I'm trying to figure out with the disconnect, where the disconnect as far as the amount of subsidy.
And Commissioner, you, you may be correct in that it would be helpful probably to have some information from the TAC itself. Because I understand what you're saying. You're saying, okay, if this is what we've been subsidizing, we've been providing this service level, and they're requesting this amount in taxpayer support, are they providing 10x the service level? I, I...
Am I misunderstanding this, or is this, was that like 10x what I'm hearing?
It's...
10x more that...
No, the, the, the number, the figure is correct. I mean, it, the number I calculated was 0.2707 mils, average over the last six years. So, so yeah, it is, it is a sort of about a 10x number.
Thank you. I mean, that, that's a little, I guess the only question I have at this time, I'm still trying to process the disconnect of this funding disparity.
And it, and it sounds, again, Commissioner, like it might be helpful to have the TAC talk about their service scenario and, and the finances that are required for that service scenario.
Chris, is there anything else? I, I've got you written down to come back to at the end of the...
Yeah, let's, let's do that, yep.
Patrick?
Sure. I mean, say, we were saying we're saving some money because we don't currently have a fire chief. Is there in the works that we're gonna have a fire chief down the road so that we'd have to prepare for that for budgeting purposes for later?
Yeah, yeah, as we were considering the fire department for this upcoming fiscal year, you know, we've already essentially committed to our current operating scenario through the end of the year, and so we...
End of which year? End of the fiscal year or the calendar?
This calendar year, right? So practically speaking, you know, there will be a, a bit of a time before there's a manager here, based on our current schedule, and then that manager will have an opportunity to consider this situation. And if they even immediately decided that they wanted to hire a fire chief, for example, that process is going to take some time as well. And so we factor then into our thinking about this fiscal year budget. But again, that is one of those kind of one-time savings that, you know, assuming a new administration wanted to put a fire chief in place, would have to account for that in a future year's budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes. Okay, so everything is kind of up in the air because of federal funding. So I'm not sure that I can speak. I'm gonna have to go with what is being recommended, because I think we're being pretty conservative of what we're looking at now, but at this point, I'm not sure that we can even go any higher to meet the, the demands that we need at this point, because we don't have the funding. Everyone's suffering from this.
Including our residents.
Absolutely. That's why I said everyone's suffering. Our businesses, absolutely. I mean, this is affecting our city and the United States, actually. So it's, it's a hard decision. I mean, but there's nothing that we can do about it. I mean, we depend a lot on the federal funding. It's hurting our students, our schools. So at this time, I think I'm just going to, you know, just kind of look at the budgeting, see how it goes, watch the spending, is all that we can basically do. Everything's unknown right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna go down to Commissioner Lacrosse.
I just wanted to confirm again, so Kimberly's position will still be, like, here? It's just gonna be the organizational development initiative?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. That's the only question I had, and I agree with Chris about what he was saying about that 17% goal and maybe paying down some of the, the stuff for the fire department and paying off some of the loans, so we don't have to do so much. And, you know, anything above that 17% I think would be ideal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just, I agree with the, I agree with the whole, the fire station trying to pay the, that, some of that down with the funds that are available or that appear to be available, to also try to kind of curb some of that. And then I just kind of have a question about something that I was looking at. So I know that you were saying, like, Full Blast, we might need boiler replacements coming up, and I was trying to kind of, like, gauge everything, because obviously it's my first time going through all of this fund folder things and whatever. But it would, it looks to me like, I mean, I don't know, from reading everything, that Full Blast at this point doesn't really, doesn't really benefit anybody, it would appear, as far as this budget shows. So, I mean, you know, putting more money into boilers and whatever else comes up that probably hasn't been set aside for Full Blast, you know, I mean, like, I don't know when we can talk about maybe cutting our, cutting our losses on that whole, I mean, the payments that were, like, the outgoing money is, is a lot significant compared to the incoming money for that, I feel like.
I, I will say, Commissioner, we do quite a bit of programming at Full Blast. It is a rather popular recreation center. You know, we run a very successful summer camp there during the summer, or months. We have a pretty successful water park operation there. Certainly, we do provide some general fund subsidy to the recreation department that gets spread across the various services that they provide. You know, I think we feel pretty good about what Full Blast is contributing to the overall recreation environment in the community. I mean, I certainly appreciate, you know, your, your thinking about that, but I think I would just suggest that that's a pretty valuable recreation asset, and there are a lot of community users that support it and would like to see us continue to invest.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a few bullet points I'd like to talk about. First of all, when it comes to diversity and equity and inclusion, I, I've been one very pleased mayor because of the fact that our economic development team has probably worked overtime to provide minority and women-based businesses in Battle Creek an opportunity to really grow and just establish themselves. And I really want to continue to see that. If you look at the diversity program, although it's very political right now, we're only spending $200,000 in City Hall budgeting. I think we've got a long way to go to really improve upon some of the performance issues that we can establish and see some growth in. So I, I'm very much in, in favor of keeping those priorities going. If we have to change the name, there's, there's another name out there for it that is more conservative or more Republican. If you just Google it, I mean, it's out there. And if, I'm willing to tell Trump that he didn't pay his $75,000 bill in 2019 when he came to Battle Creek, and if he wants to take away our funding that we have from the federal government relative to DEI, pay your bill. You know, let's be fair. Ted, is there any knowledge or any movement from the state legislature on the high-crime area funding that they are doing their best to establish an endowment for? Is that based in our budget at all, or...
Well, it's not factored into our budget. My understanding, and the vice mayor may, may know even more than I do, that there, I mean, there's continued work around legislation that would support public safety services, and, you know, and by public safety, I, I don't mean public safety literally. I do mean, obviously, our police and fire operations. And there is legislation that's advancing, and we recognize what the dynamic is in Lansing right now, and probably the budget will be a battle, no doubt about that. But it, it does sound like there's a little bit of momentum behind that, and, you know, we're watching it closely, and it would certainly have, what's being proposed could certainly have a, a very positive impact for Battle Creek.
Does that legislation specifically instruct us to hire additional police officers, or will it be a subsidy to the budget?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of that stipulation, Mayor.
Okay.
Again, I might...
Well, I know it's a big number for Battle Creek.
It is a big number for Battle Creek, yes.
Okay. All right. I've received several concerns about the TAC millage. And are we taxing people twice for transportation in this budget and then for the TAC millage that they paid in February? I, I feel that there needs to be an offset of the money out of the rainy day fund or our general fund of the $600,000 to give the people a break that have already paid the millage to the TAC. I mean, it was just a big bill for a lot of families. And I know that's a tough one, but still, why should we have to tax them again when they've already paid for transportation this year? Tough one. The fire department and their improvements, I, I'm very much in support of it, but at the same time, I believe the police department paid for the Taj Mahal that they have through a, their budgeting. Wasn't that...
Yeah.
Didn't they pay it over 15 years, a million dollars a year?
So we, we do, I mean, we have a, a small dedicated millage, right, for capital improvements that helps support some of the obligations that we have to pay for the police department. I think, you know, the debt, obviously, on that facility is, is larger than what we're accumulating annually in that set-aside millage. It would be certainly the same situation with the fire facilities. I mean, all of that essentially is a general fund obligation. So, you know, whether we plugged that into, directly into the police's budget, or we just have it as a transfer in the general fund, it, it, it essentially is all the same, Mayor. It's all a general fund obligation. What we haven't done necessarily is said, okay, police and fire, because you're assuming all of this debt, you've got to find reductions within your workforce, for example, or other parts of your operation to accommodate...
Overtime.
No, we have, yeah, and overtime is an area that obviously we work on, and the best way to manage overtime, obviously, is to be fully staffed. And, you know, and that's been a challenge both in fire and police over the last several years. So, I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. The allocation for debt for fiscal year 26 tied to the fire facilities is in the fire budget, but we have not necessarily taken the approach that if you assume this debt, then we have to find operational reductions in other parts of the department.
Well, I think I hear you understanding some of my concerns. And, you know, I'm only one of the commissioners, so if there was a top priority, I would think the reduction to the taxpayers of the $600,000, even if we have to... even if we have to take out of the general fund balance to pay for that need this year instead of going to the taxpayers for it. That's my opinion. I show now that the vice mayor and Chris have made reservations to speak again. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
So I guess as I, as I listen to all of this, my questions are more kind of global in nature. And it's great that we put together a budget and, you know, it's a guesstimate as to how much money that we're going to have. But when I think about when I'm putting together my household budget, it's based on what do I think my income is going to be? So are we, are we having conversations with some of our community partners? We've got an industrial park that is full of businesses that support our automotive industry. And with the prospect of tariffs, I can tell you at the small business that we own, my husband has already gotten letters from some of our suppliers saying, we had price increases that were effective April 1 because of what was being purported, like tariffs are coming, so your price is going to go up. So what are our community partners thinking? And what is that going to do to their business and their business model? Are we looking at maybe some larger, some higher unemployment levels than what we've seen in the past? Are they looking at scaling back? If they're a small business, are they going to be able to sustain that? What's going to happen to our auto industry in general? And if we've got the big three that are rolling back production, they don't need the services that we're able to provide. And I don't know, that's kind of a more global question, but I think that it all goes into what are our property taxes? What kind of income tax are we going to collect? I mean, there's, so Aaron or Ted, help?
I mean, that certainly is a global question. And not knowing a ton about the industrial park, I would maybe refer to BCU as the manager of the Battle Creek Tifa and the manager of the industrial park to kind of get a feel for, you know, what they're hearing from the businesses out in the industrial park.
So I guess, not to interrupt, but so are these factors part of what you've put together and presented to us? Has that been factored into that?
Yeah, I would say what we're recommending in this budget is based on our best understanding today of what our revenues might look like. And, you know, property tax revenues, for example, you know, obviously, we are, we do the board of review, we determine what are, what the overall taxable value of property in our community is going to be. And then we have a millage rate that's applied to that, right? You know, that doesn't change much necessarily. If a business is struggling, that obligation is there. What it could impact, right, is a business owner's ability to meet their obligation. So, I mean, so we factor it in, you know, to the extent that we have an understanding of, you know, what's collectible every year and what's not. I mean, trends and that kind of thing. Do we do a more global analysis, such as what you're suggesting, as part of this? This, probably not. I mean, I, you know, that kind of an in-depth analysis of the business environment, particularly given all of the unknowns, we factored in the best that we can.
And I appreciate that, and I understand that. We can only make projections based on the information that we have, and that information seems to kind of constantly be changing. Don't need an answer tonight, but what I would appreciate at some point here in the next week or so, if you can, is millage rates for our neighboring communities, both the surrounding townships and then maybe some of our comparable cities. And not the overall millage rate because we have no control over city TAC. And as much as you might not like TAC, that was, that's a separate non-city.
It's county, yep.
So not KCC, not any of that other stuff, but our local millage rate. And I, you probably, well, actually, maybe Aaron does know all of the millage.
Actually, we had that very discussion today, so I think Aaron's got some information he could share.
So, Commissioner, as we've thought about the millage rate conversation this year, I took it upon myself to do a little bit of an analysis of what the millage rates are in other urban core communities. So there are 13 total of those in Michigan, of which Battle Creek is one. Just to list them really quick for you. Ann Arbor, Battle Creek, Bay City, Dearborn, Detroit, Flint, Grand Rapids, Jackson, Kalamazoo, Lansing, Muskegon, Pontiac, and Saginaw. Out of the 13 of those, the city of Battle Creek's overall millage rate, you know, and this is looking back at last year, 15.665, is lower than all but four of those. With a couple of those, I think are artificially depressed because of large industrial or wealthy individuals such as Kalamazoo or Grand Rapids. And out of the 13 of those, all but one of them have a separate millage for transportation that's separately levied. When we look at the overall, you know, homestead millage rate for Battle Creek Public Schools, now, this is for 2024, granted, that rate for, was 51.267. That was kind of middle of the pack out of those 13. And when we think about the city millage rate as a percentage of the whole, you know, in the, in the Battle Creek and Lakeview School districts, the city millage rate represents about 23% of the non-homestead levy and about 31% of the homestead levy. So, you know, just, it's a little bit trickier to compare them to, you know, our, you know, our surrounding peers. But out of the three other cities in, I was just looking this morning, out of the three other cities in Calhoun County, the city has a cheaper millage rate than two of them. And the third one is, the difference is about half a mil. So, so overall, I feel like we're pretty well in line with our, you know, both as an urban core community and as a community in Calhoun County in terms of our operating millage rate. So, or, excuse me, our overall millage rate.
Thank you.
Chris?
No, I appreciate the vice mayor bringing that up because I take every opportunity I can to say, hey, look at your tax bill. Look at it line by line, look and see what we actually charge our three line items versus the dozen other line items that are on there from the county and the schools and ISDs and all like that. On your numbers that you presented there, I'd be interested to see those ones that you're comparing us to as far as the millage rate, whether or not they have an income tax. I think that's a huge factor. We have an income tax, do they? So that would be. As far as TAC, I would like to say I don't dislike TAC, okay? I dislike the way it has been implemented. Okay, I think the goal of increased transportation for our residents and the residents throughout the rest of the TAC district is laudable, and I want to see us move toward that goal. I just, I have, from the very beginning, have had a disagreement with the city, our city administration on how that was implemented and the public process that we were engaged in to get us to that point. Okay, that aside, I do want to briefly touch on LDDA. Ted, you mentioned that LDDA has the potential eventually and has a goal of what it would like to capture. First of all, I would like to see, and I think I've shared with Ted and I have shared with the mayor, that I think we need more public engagement as far as like members of this commission I've put myself forward, or if it's somebody else then that's selected to be on that board or at least an ad hoc member of that board to help implement any capture, that I would like, I would like to see that, us, more public engagement in that process. And then I, and Ted, you and I have discussed this, maybe we have some kind of hybrid where, okay, we can capture new revenue that's created. We were building a new Olive Garden and a new Texas Roadhouse. Maybe we can capture that new revenue that's created out of there but not cut into the stream that the city depends on for our essential public services and maybe use that, some new revenue rolling that in too. Similar to what we do with new developments on housing and other businesses that are captured. I guess, let me circle back to TAC one last time. I was very disappointed to hear that once, when TAC levied, it's 2.6 whatever millage, that not all of that has been allowed to flow through to the TAC. LDDA, or not LDDA, but BC TIF and the DDA, which I serve as an ad hoc member on, captures millage that is intended to go for this transportation. It captures that for other purposes. Especially BC TIF, we hear from economic development folks that, hey, our folks that work at the industrial park need transportation, and this is a great goal and we support this, but we're going to capture it and not give it to them. So I know there are some discussions, Ted, you and I have talked about this, about letting that cap, instead of capturing it, letting that flow through, and then maybe we can overall bring that millage down, have some kind of agreement with the TAC. So I encourage the commission to lean on the administration to continue that push to allow those funds be passed through for their intended designation. So I don't think, have anything else at this time other than I would echo what the mayor said about as far as passing along any savings that we have from transportation subsidy from our general fund onto our residents to help ease that burden. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could too, I would just point out, kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Simmons' last comments about TAC capture in the TIF districts, that the DDA, for example, and I know Commissioner Simmons, you weren't able to make the last meeting, but they did decide to, or at least they budgeted to pass along some of their dollars to the TAC in a contract for services.
So the LDDA is not going to capture?
The LDDA is capturing. They don't intend at this point to pass that capture through, but some of that has been the result of conversations with the TAC about, you know, the benefits of developing that corridor. And so, you know, in this case, I think there's kind of a general agreement that implementing some of that vision both has transportation benefits and other benefits for the community.
Are there any other commission comments? Commissioner Lacrosse?
Just when she mentioned Full Blast, I know that in the past we've had some either free or very discounted passes to free, to those that were on Medicaid, I believe, something along that lines. If we could get back to that for kids, that would be great. If we can add that in somewhere, I know especially like the older kids, it's, they don't have a lot of things to do. And so then they kind of turn to other, maybe not so wholesome activities. So if we can give them an opportunity to do that, again, that would be great.
Ted, I don't know if you received the direction that you needed to or not.
Yes, certainly, we've got some things to contemplate. We hear the recommendations from the commission. We may want to think of the different ways that we may be able to get to the end result. That may take a little bit of analysis on our part. I think that probably, I'm not hearing the commission say, okay, we need to have another workshop, per se. But we'll plan to bring forth a budget at the June 3 meeting as planned, and hopefully we'll modify it in a way that reflects the desires of the commission.
And just one more comment about the priority-based budgeting. I have received pushback from commissioners about having too many workshops. And that included priority-based budgeting. And it was recommended that they would do things through the city manager's office. So I'm sorry if we never accomplished that, but...
We haven't in my last three, four, five, six, seven years, I have not been involved in any priorities. So I think that's important for...
I'm not disagreeing with that, it's just that...
I think that's important for elected representatives to set priorities.
I agree.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Are there any public comments? Any no public comments, well, during the meeting? I told Ted earlier today, I thought maybe an hour and a half, so maybe an hour and 20 minutes. Thank you, everyone.